Because if we're not educated, it's like the Bible say, our people are destroyed for what? For the lack of knowledge. If we're educated, we know how to deal with this situation in a better than what we have been dealing with. But the sad thing about it, more than anything to me, and I'm just gonna be honest with my world and people that is in here, because I think each and every one of us want to know the truth. This governor has taken over this situation. I would have never allowed this governor to take over this. I would have told this governor from day one, when Washington and Lansing was squeezing his tail about what he's done, and when he became apologetic. The first thing I would have done is told him to take his state receivership and his unconstitutional emergency manager law, take it out of our city. Let's do that first. A lot of elected officials who were elected to do their job, because apparently, when the state took over, they didn't have our best interest at all. And they proved that. So if they proved that, and he was so honest, saying that he's apologetic, then if you're apologetic, show it in action. Take your unconstitutional law out of our city and allow us to take over our own city. But unfortunately, and I'm just telling you from how I view as an elected official, you have to take it for whatever its worth, but in my mind and how I look at it from the inside, it looks like to me this governor has taken over the situation. You fixing two houses on the west side, two houses on the east, two houses on the south. You can't fix pipes like that. Because all of the homes are connected to one, now you can buy a lot of them. All the pipes are connected to one order. The main pipe. So if you got a house on the left side and a house on the right side, that's not fixing. You the only house in the middle that is fixing. Then it's a great chance that that house in the middle is gonna get replaced. They have new pipes as well. I hope I'm making sense. I don't know. Maybe I am, maybe I'm not. But fixing two houses in different geographical areas, that don't make sense. What you should have done is start fixing in front of the schools first. Because right now, they're talking about extending the time for the children in the school. Well, you can't extend the time with the children in the school, and the children are the most susceptible ones that's gonna contract how much water may produce. Fix the pipes in front of the schools first. I don't need this. Fix the pipe in front of the schools first. It's not that many, it's not that many out of all the houses that they didn't fix. All of the schools could have been fixed. And then you work outside, and go block for block, not house for house. You go block for block, and make sure one block is done. Then you go to another block, and you say one block at a time. But you do the schools first, so that children don't make excuses why they shouldn't be in school, parents don't make excuses, but most important, they are assured great health and good education, all at the same time. But you can't fix two houses on Patterson, and then two houses on Niagara, and then two houses on West Alba. It don't work like that. But I'm just giving you just a little synopsis of what's going on. Because if I don't give it to you, then I am in remit. And I don't wanna be remiss without giving you the education that you may not hear about down at City Hall. But I'm telling you, this governor has actually taken over. He's never came and talked to city council. City council has never sat and talked to this governor. Only people talk to this governor is the mayor and the concerned pastor. He's never sat with the legislative body. I just need you to know this. I really do. Because if I don't tell you this, you will never know, because in some of your minds, you would think some of city councils have sat down and talked to this governor. It's not true. None of us. He's never once, he snuck in and out, he comes in all the time, but council never get a chance to speak to him. Never. And so I asked myself, why? Why is the most intelligent question, if we are the legislative body? Let me give you some other, some more education. Nine city councils, based on the chart, never forget this. Nine city council as a body is more powerful than the mayor. Because we are the legislative bodies. We was taught this when we went to training, and Franken move at the Michigan Municipal League. So what that means is that the legislative body should be involved in everything. Well, council don't have their power. Only person that got their power is the mayor. We asked the transition advisory board yesterday, which is the five appointed, unconstitutional, five appointed, that if council say yes, they can say no, and they no go. But council, I, the president, the vice president, asked for our power back. Administration didn't want us to have our power back. Well, let me tell you this. If we had our power back, we in control of the money. We do the checks and the balances. But if we don't have our power back, and only the mayor has her power back, then who controls the money? We can't do no checks and balances, because we don't, we're not a legislative body, we don't have the power. So I just need you to know this. I don't know how you may feel, I mean, you know. But I just want you to be educated and know this, because a lot of times, people don't know what's going on at City Hall. And I know a lot of you are first rated. You are. I'm first rated. My wife got marks all on her body. We don't know what that is. So I'm first rated, and I live right on Patterson Street. I don't live nowhere else, I live on Patterson. I only got one filter just on my sink. I don't have nothing on my shower. I just get in and I pray. I don't know if I'm affected or not. I really don't. Cancer is hereditary in my family. Everybody in my family dies from cancer. And so I'm just saying this as a city councilman, that I share your pain too. And any and everything that I can do, in bringing some resolve to your pain. I don't have a problem doing that, and I would do that more than I would do it for myself. But you have to understand, that something is not right in this city. Something is not right in this city. I'm just being honest with y'all. Now, I don't know if that may cost me something, because I always learn, that every great leader, every great leader that's a real leader, the wages of his leadership sometime has been his life. I'm okay with that. Because I'm exposing, something ain't right. And you guys know that. You guys know that, something isn't right. But it takes us, it takes us to make it right. Can't be me. I'm just the voice. But the power lies in you. Don't lie to me. I could speak like I'm speaking now, and I'd be speaking by myself. But they know I know the truth. This is why they marginalize me. If you guys can remember, and they silenced me. When I was on the Steve Harvey Show, and I'm just telling you this, to be really honest with you guys, my wife heard them tell them to cut me, cut his part. But they left a little bit. But the part that they gave y'all was confusing. I gave them the full meat, they wanna make this a college city. They really do. They wanna make this a college city, but how can you make this a college city? When you got forty-two percent of the people in this city poor, you got forty percent poverty, I mean, uh, read below a six grade level, and you got forty percent or more with felonies on their record. How can you make this a college city unless you allow visitors to take place? Now, be mindful, be mindful of this. People think that they trying to run us all out. Well, I hear you. But people think that they trying to run all of us out. Well, let me tell you this. They just setting it up so that we can start running out. And those that stay, they'll build around you, make your living conditions so expensive, that you would just leave anyway. They just setting it up so that we can just go. They know all of us not gonna go, they know that. But they set it up where that we'll get the going, and we won't change our mind, because the most powerful thing in this world, never forget this, is a made up mind. And once our mind is made up, even if they fix it, people mind already made up, say, man, I'm just gonna go anywhere. Because this process has affected us economically, educationally, if it affects us on our home, the value of our home, it depreciate. Some people wanna leave and can't even sell their home. I mean, you guys gotta really understand what I'm telling you. Believe me or not, like me or not, but please understand what I'm saying. Don't, just take the message. Something ain't right. It ain't right. It ain't right. And I cannot finish expressing that, but it ain't right. Alright. So I wanna start this process going, and I hope that you guys understood what I'm saying. I really do. It just ain't right in this city. But we gotta believe in God. Because at the end of the day, man and woman will fail you, but God will always protect you. He will take your best interest, and believe this, no matter how badly, gloomy it looks. Children are affected, what did God tell the disciples, when they would let the children in? He said, until you become one like them, you will never inherit the kingdom of God. God took interest in children and women more than he took interest in any creation that he could have. And children are being affected, and people wanna do things that is not right on the expense of the children that suffer, God will extend his mercy. Believe, believe in it. God is gonna come in, he's gonna come in at a time when we say, man, I never imagined. But God is gonna make this right. He's gonna make this right. Because I'm telling you, right now, as of today, it ain't right. And so I took the mission to do this, and I'm hoping that everybody gets something out of it. So let me go and give the people, so that they can come and give you what you came here for, and uh, let's get it started, okay? Thank you very much.
It was hard to follow the councilman. He's a dynamic speaker, a man very passionate about this problem, and has done so much with the community here already. Um, so we're glad to have him here, and welcoming us. We're gonna get to a video here very shortly, that we shot a few weeks ago, two weeks ago, here in Flint. And then we're gonna have a little press briefing, and then a demonstration of the WaterO, water purifiers that we have here. Uh, but first, I wanna just have the team come up and introduce themselves. This is, this is the CEO of WaterO. He's the brains behind this reverse osmosis water filtering system that is far beyond anything that's ever been created. And I'm gonna have Yujo introduce himself, and the rest of the team here.
Hello everyone, my name is Yuki Jo, and I'm the founder of WaterO. This is our reverse water purifier we create, and we'll demonstrate it later.
Hi, my name is Ken Saret, and the founder of Water is Life. We're involved in water purification in forty countries around the world, helping transform communities. We are here to help partner with WaterO, to bring clean water to the good people of Flint.
Hello everyone, my name is Jimmy Brode, and I'm a marketing consultant with WaterO.
Corey Smith from Flint X Two, all of Corey O'Water Solutions. I would work with WaterO on education and distribution on the product.
Okay, great, this is, we're gonna get to the video. Um, it's very, very short, but it's the people of Flint speaking to us about the problem, and what they're hoping the solutions are to the water problem here.
I'm in Ohio, making some tickets for Flint, Michigan.
How long have you been here?
Uh, nineteen, nineteen, that's just thirty-two.
Long time. So cities change a lot, so it's that.
Yeah, it's changed a lot, yes.
What wasn't like that then?
Oh, you were right, you were there, you're young, and uh, it's been a minute. Now we're gonna have a minute with.
Flint used to have about eighty thousand UAW jobs. That wasn't the salary people, that was just the hourly rate UAW people. And today, there's probably less than six.
And it's so sad, you never thought that you would wake up one day and not be able to use your water. My life has changed drastically. Um, and it seems weird that something small is, uh, you know, we thought just having lead in the water would be a big problem, it's a terrible problem. Uh, on a daily basis, my daily routine has changed. Something as simple as taking a bath or a shower has become just, um, something terrible thing for us.
Cook there, and wash chicken, and pork, and you constantly opening up cases of water, you know? It just became, just, it's just horrible, you know?
Uh, we are afraid to get in the bath, afraid to get in the water.
It's, um, rash, and I can't find out, it's so boring. My wife hadn't had a problem at all, and now she had cancer in the kidney. She had to have a part of the kidney taken out. Um, me, I broke out with rash, still has rash on my back. And if you don't lotion down, um, you itching all the time.
I've had a couple of pipes come in, I don't know specifically what it's doing to the hair, but I know it's making it off of the root. Uh, I've had a couple of pipes come in with a lot of white itch and shedding.
Because she was saying that that people are actually losing their hair. I love that. She had hair, and it's back to here, and it's in my hair. See? And I don't wear a flat top, but I had to get my hat set like that, because I didn't want anybody to see, but my soul is in my hair. See, and I got some, you know, red hair. Whenever he gets his lead, he, not a rich man, I had a mother watch, my fiancee, he died, died of pneumonia. Recently, died of pneumonia. And uh, when I was in the hospital, when he died, and then I was told he was toxic. But at that time, I didn't understand, relate the lead, the water to toxic, you know, and all that. But he died with pneumonia. Uh, and as I said, he was, he was toxic. And uh, it's, it's sad. He was only fifty-eight years old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seeing the movies, you know, about you're in a pistol, and pumping, and the water spray on you. It's like going back to the old days, or just boil your bottled water to take a nap, boil your water, and cook your food. It's just like, you're in the prime.
It's like living in the third world.
That's what we are.
I found myself, you know, one time, I was just so stressed out, and I was tired that day, and I forgot to turn the filters, filter side on, and not drink the water. I was like, Lord, please save, save me, please, please take care of me, you know? Took a ride with my sister, please, because I was tired that day, and I forgot, I must have been about that, when you drink water.
I think, uh, October, I think two thousand fifteen, they were saying, uh, Dwight was alright. Dwight was alright, you know, he was alright. I saw them afterwards, at the plant, telling us that the water was good.
Really?
And I'll never forget that, they were tossing glasses on the water, but I never seen nobody drinking.
Please, please don't hide it. Uh, because unfair that we wasn't, uh, alerted or told in a timely fashion when it first happened. Uh, and I just think that if something goes on, you need to let, uh, you need to let people know, you need to, um, try and prepare people if you can, you know? Um, don't just let them continue to use lead water. You bathing in lead water, drinking lead water, brushing teeth with lead water, you know? So unfair. So if something was to happen, please let the people know, and try to resolve it. Try, try to resolve it.
I have a friend who's a graduate, and apparently, they tested several times, and it was swollen, it's high. They tested the weed, it was high. And she's just sick.
Mama Griddy got sick. She was drinking the water, and she, she, mama, mama, she forgot that it was lead in the water, so that she died.
My sister was so excited, she has a child, a daughter. We taped up her sinks, and I have pictures of that on my phone as well. All our faucets have been taken, but I have nothing to assure that my niece don't use the water. You know, so. And we're just trying to figure out what effect this is gonna have on them. Not just physically, but emotionally, right to these people. Because if once the water is cleared out, they're gonna have this phobia, you know? Be scared to just use the water, you know?
And I have a lot of pipes that are complicated, getting around to them. People don't wanna buy them because of where they at, and then they're not gonna get, you know, what they want from them. So they're gonna have to give them the water, so.
I want to go to Flint, you know? And I'm gonna leave. I can say, all they need to do is drink the water, work together, and I can live. My granddad's a great guy, he's a lovely dude. Because that generation of me, my generation about now, I'm seventy, my generation about now. What I pray for, my, I got great grandbabes, they need an opportunity. They need jobs, they need schools, they need better money. If they need nothing, just like he was, just like with ninety cent, our children. I got a three-year-old grandson. Well, you get married, you know, you need to drink water, after seventy years, I just remember a short time ago. And I pray every day that, uh, you know, that we don't see so much of this, I pray every day.
You know, it's, it's a lot of us that's probably more ill than what you would ever think that we are. You know, and so we would say to the world, you just hope that you would never have to go through what we are going through here in Flint, Michigan.
Can I see it? Okay, alright, alright. I wanna explain, can you hit that light for me, please? Can one of y'all hit that light for me? I wanna explain something to you real quick. A person was supposed to come here, but they viewed this video to give you some understanding of what this water is doing. But let me give you a little understanding of the education that I got. When this lead comes in your body, it only stays in there for twenty-eight, twenty-nine days. It's gonna take thirty, no more than thirty days. And what it does, it goes into your blood, and then it start going into your tissues, and it start going into your kidneys. And what happened? Is your bones. Your bones start calling for this lead, because it start thinking that this lead is calcium. And so the lead start trying to do what the calcium is gonna do. And you can imagine in your mind, if it's not calcium in this lead, what it would do. And see, that's one of the things that you have to understand. So when people go get tested, and they say you have no lead, well, that's not necessarily true. It just, it went somewhere else, because it only stays in your system twenty-eight, thirty days. So you have to do a more thorough test. And when they nip the people poking their fingers, when that air hit that poke, it alterates. That's not a good test. They have to just draw the blood from a needle, not from a poke. Because when that, as soon as that air hit that blood, it's no longer, it's no good anymore. So that's kinda like, substantive way of doing it, and there's not no good progress out of that. You don't really get good information out of that, because you could have it, and they telling you, you don't. And so that's just something I wanted to give you, so that you can understand that. Because a lot of people don't know. They go get tested, I got tested, they said I didn't have it. Well, you could, and you still could have. It's just been over thirty days. And so, I just hope that you guys do more of a thorough test than just doing, just going by what they telling you. Because what they telling you, it may be true, yeah, they don't have it, or it's not the test, but you may have it. And so, let's get this started. Uh, la de la.
We actually have one more short video to show, product video, which I forgot about. Um, let me, let's play that first, if we can get the lights over there. I wish you could see the videos on high definition screen. They're really, really amazing videos.
Well, I'd like to introduce, um, she's an attorney, Ms. Esther, and she wanna give you some understanding of some of your legalities, and some of your ways, and how you can defend yourself and fight for yourself. So Ms. Esther, can you please come up and give a presentation or synopsis of who you are, and what you stand for?
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. Um, I have been asked to come and talk to you about, a little bit about myself, and the work that I do, and that my law firm does, and also to tell you a little bit about us, and what you, what legal remedies that you might have as a result of what's happening here in this community. So let me tell you first, my name is Esther Berazovsky, and I'm a lawyer in the law firm of Williams Cooper Berazovsky. We are, our offices are in Philadelphia and in New Jersey, but my practice is a national practice. We do environmental, um, cases involving, representing communities all over the country. And we've been doing it for decades. Uh, some of, I brought, actually, some of the cases you may have heard of, some not, but literally from the east coast, west coast, and in the middle of the country. One of the cases, you know, a few years ago, was a case called Tom's River, where we represented a community of, where there was also municipal water contamination in which there was a children's cancer cluster. And it was called Tom's River. There's actually a book that's been written about the case, it won a Pulitzer Prize. Last year, I brought a copy just to show you, but, um, it's, what happened there was that the municipal water supply was contaminated. And what we did there was to represent those individuals that were harmed. In this community, what's happened here is somewhat unique. It's not unique in terms of communities, municipal water supply being contaminated, but what's unique is that it was done by the government, and by the regulatory agency, and those people that are charged with protecting you. And so, there are some unique and challenging legal issues, but we are confident, and we already, we represent a number of people. I actually was contacted by people in this community, some months back, because of the work that we've done, um, to represent them. Uh, so there, the cases that have been filed and that we're filing are against the government, but also potentially some private parties. There are many different types of claims. Let me back up a minute. One of the things that I do when I represent a community, or people in a community, is not only to represent them in court, and give their claims a voice, and advocate for those claims, but also to work with people in meetings, getting together, to figure out what is available. What kind of, not only remedies are available, but what kind of services are available? How can you organize to better advocate for yourselves, to deal with some of the issues? Because as a lawyer, and for a lawyer, and for a lawyer, and for a lawyer, Because as a lawyer, and filing a claim on your behalf, whether it's for property damage, whether it's for personal injuries, whether it's for monitoring of illnesses, it's still, that's, those are money damages. But in addition to that, there are things, because the problem is ongoing, not, I, I understand they now say, well, the water's testing clear. But I wonder how many of you actually believe that? I'm sure not many. And one of the other things that we do is to try to give people information about what you can, you know, what, what you can do to help. For example, how many of you thought that boiling your water would make it safer? Anybody? At any point, some of you, right? Because a lot of people think if you boil the water, it'll make it safer. Not when there's heavy metals involved. So there are a lot of, you know, things, there's a lot of information, there are a lot of services available. There's also just the trauma of living through something like this. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about me, because even though I live in Philadelphia, I have a history here in Michigan. I spent eleven years in Michigan. I lived in Detroit, I went to Wayne State University. And in my prior life, I was a psychologist. And what I did as a psychologist is, it's not working. Maybe I don't need you all here. Okay, is that better? Okay, alright. So what I did, actually, the work I did was working with communities that were traumatized as a result of a disaster that was man-made, or man-created. For example, like Three Mile Island, or in Missouri, Times Beach, where the whole town was flooded with dioxins. I wasn't a lawyer then. What I was, is a psychologist that worked with the community to deal with the trauma of those experiences, and evaluating those, both for the community, but also for the claims that they have. And I, I lived in Michigan, I went, went to school here, I did, I worked in community mental health for years, and then I moved back east. And then, the reason I went to law school, and became a lawyer, and that's now twenty-five years ago, was to do environmental work, to do this kind of work, to represent communities in doing this kind of work. So one of the things I would say to you, before I get to what claims you have, is that regardless of whether you, who you decide, if you decide to bring claims, and you all have, there are certain claims you all have, all of you. And some, you know, some of you have, and they're different. And how we treat them is different. We represent people individually. And each one of you, and each one of your families, has individual and personal claims. And when we file claims on your behalf, if you retain us, it's for your individual claims, as opposed to class actions. There are some claims that we do bring, we do class actions, but on very specific issues, which really do apply to everybody. Most don't, because you, each, each family, each individual is different, whether you run a home, own a home, whether you have lead in your blood, whether you don't, whether you have had rashes. I, I understand you saw some video a little while ago. We were, uh, we're gonna bring, um, I think the dermatologist to talk about some of the skin rashes, and some of the, the problems that the water has caused. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here. That's why, you, you saw the video, but not the person. He was, he apologized, as he was unable to get here. Um, but anyway, so in terms of the, what I wanted to say to you is, regardless of what you do, make sure that you talk to people who have done this work, and, you know, understand what the issues are. So what kind of claims are there? Well, one of the claims is quality of life, okay? The quality of life damages. Every one of you who lives in this community, who can't drink the water, who has to cook with bottled water, can't take showers or bathe in the way that you would expect to be able to do in your own home, has been impacted. The quality of your life has been impacted. For a lot of people, they're not delivering, as I understand it, they're not delivering bottled water to your homes. You have to go and get it. Is that, is that right? Yeah. Now, for some people, that is really tough. Maybe you don't have a car, maybe, maybe you're elderly, maybe you don't feel well. That's hard. Even getting it from downstairs to upstairs can be difficult. So the quality of life claims are something that everybody has, that all of you have. There are property damage claims. Now, for those of you who own property, the devaluation of property based on these issues that are based on, you know, not having potable water, not having water that you can drink, that necessarily, even if you were to be able to sell your property, it's not gonna be for what the market value is, because it's gonna buy it for market value, and you don't have drink, clean drinking water. So we have property damages. Not only the devaluation, but there are other types of property damages. There are personal injuries. So many of you have had, many people I've spoken to have had skin rashes. Um, there are people who have had leishner's disease. There are people who have been, many people have been diagnosed with pneumonia. Not everybody who has been diagnosed with pneumonia might have had leishner's disease, but some people may have, because the symptoms are similar, and there may have been misdiagnosis. Those are all things that, when people retain us, what we do is ask them to, to fill out detailed questionnaires. We go through questionnaire with everybody, get all of the information from every one of you, to the extent that you retain us, and figure out what are the claims. Not everything that happens to you is related to the water, but there are a lot of medical issues that may be linked, and that those need to be investigated. Unfortunately, Michigan is one of the few states that does, does not have, does, okay, does not have something called medical monitoring. In most states, in environmental cases, there's a thing called medical monitoring. For people who have been exposed, and can prove and establish that there's been an exposure to a toxin, medical monitoring for the kinds of illnesses that may result from that exposure is part of a legal claim that they have. Michigan does not allow for that. Now, there are other claims that characterize those, damn, those, that kind of monitoring or surveillance. So I think that there are things that we can do, because the exposure is, you know, clear, you've been exposed. The other thing about lead is, I know some of you may have had your lead, lead test, uh, your blood tested, some of you may not have. It's really important that everybody does get tested. Now, let's stay, I, again, let me just say, as a disclaimer, I'm, I'm not a doctor, I am not a medical person, and I'm not a, a health, um, uh, you know, a health person. But as a lawyer, and having done this kind of work for many, many years, lead stays in the body. It doesn't leave the body. It does leave the blood. So its presence in your blood may be twenty-five to thirty-five days. So just because you test negative now, doesn't mean that you haven't had lead. It moves to bone. And right now, as far as I'm aware, and again, I'm not a physician, as far as I'm aware, the testing to establish whether you've been exposed, other than blood, is not, it's not, has not moved beyond experimental phases. So that limit of childbearing age have to be concerned, because if you have lead, if you've been exposed, and it's there, then that is something you need to be aware of and potentially concerned about. Um, so there are personal injuries, medical issues, property damage, quality of life. And what we do, what I do, what my firm does, is evaluate those four people that retain us, and then file suit, uh, on their behalf, to get them compensated for those losses. So, uh, what I wanna just repeat is, to the extent that you seek legal counsel from anyone, not necessarily from me, but whoever you go to, just make sure that this is an area of the law that they practice in, that they know about chemical exposure cases, how to litigate those, how to handle those, that they have the experts to work with, that can properly assess the damage, and also the remedies. So I invite you to ask me any questions, if you have any.
Are you licensed to practice in Michigan?
I am not licensed to practice in Michigan, but I am working with lawyers in Michigan that are, who brought me here. And I will, the way it works legally is that when you work in another state, you get admitted to the bar for the purposes of that case. I work in a lot of states where I get admitted for the purpose of handling that case, but I am working with Michigan lawyers. Anybody else?
How do these folks get in touch with you if they decide they wanna retain you to represent them for the damages done to their families, and their home, and their lives? And, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
How would they reach out?
How would they reach out to me?
If they chose to obtain, retain you as their, their representation legally?
Sure. Um, I have cards here, I'm happy to give you cards. There's some folks, we have some questionnaires, if people are interested in being, uh, represented, we have questionnaires for people to fill out. But I have cards, which I will put out on the table for people to take it as my contact information. It also has our website, which I would invite you to look at, because it will tell you about what we, what we do, I mean, the environmental work we do. But I have cards, and that is, uh, the best way. It has, uh, phone numbers, and email address, and, uh, website. And there's other information, I think, that folks here have.
Under personal injury, you mentioned three things, leishner's, pneumonia, and skin rash. What else do you, what are their types of, you know, I heard kidney, and lung, or different things that how it could be affected by this? Is this something we should be looking for, you know? Different, different effects from the lead?
There are different effects, and I, I just wanna clarify, I am a lawyer, not a physician, so I don't wanna give medical information per se. There are respiratory issues, let me just back up one second. What has been established is that there's lead, but chances are, I, I think there's pretty good evidence there's other, other contaminants. There are other heavy metals, and there are other toxins that are in the water as well. So, uh, you know, if you look at, uh, lead, I mean, there are kidney respiratory issues, there are, there are a variety of things. And I'm happy to, uh, direct you to more medical, I don't like to give medical information, but there are a number of things, but it, it appears that there are other contaminants, and that's one of the things that we're looking at, is we're getting the data of what actually, uh, there's been a lot of data generated, because this is, obviously, as you know, generated a lot of publicity, so the regulatory agencies are gathering a lot of information. We're also looking at, because of the failure to put anti-corrosive, um, treatment in the pipes, it's not just lead that's coming off of them. So there are other toxins, there's other metals, there's other, probably other volatile organics, and other chemicals. And that's something that also needs to be looked at. You have enough?
Yes, for such smooth and our property damages, is there a cutoff date on, uh, follow the claim on that? Is there a drop-in date on that, or what?
You know, it's a really, really excellent question. So Michigan law requires that a notice be filed, it's called a notice of claim. And in any case that's filed against the state, there is a time period within which that has to be filed. And I, this is probably more legalese than you wanna hear, but you probably, you may have heard of the term statute of limitations. There is a time period in every state, in every jurisdiction, from the time you learn that you have an injury, whether it's to property or to body, that you have the time to file a lawsuit. Now, states vary, it can be from the time it happened, or from the time you discovered that there may be a connection between somebody having done something wrong, and, and, and the injury. But in Michigan, there is, as in others, some other states, there is, if you're suing the state, you have to file this notice. It's not a complaint, it's a notice that you have a claim. And we have actually been filing them on behalf of people that we represent. And it, I believe that it is, there is a two-year period, and I think, from what I understand, it's, you know, it, it comes up in April, because it was two years ago that, that, um, you know, because of the, when certain things happened. Now, the, one of the lawsuits that was filed under the class actions, my understanding is they didn't file, I, I don't know if this is accurate or not, but the state has filed a motion to dismiss. They have filed, asked the court to throw out the cases, because people didn't file these notices. Now, they're basically saying people's cases should be thrown out, because they didn't file one time, even though the state poisoned every, the whole community. So I don't know what a judge is gonna do with that. The short answer is, the sooner, the better.
Is it a difference between, uh, personally injury, property?
In terms of time of filing?
Yes. Is it, is it all the same, in the same budget?
It's the same. I mean, it would be within the same complaint. And if, when you file the notice, you would say property and personal injury. You make it broad, you're fairly broad. So there's a notice of claim, that has to be filed, that's different than filing a complaint. A complaint is a much more detailed, um, you know, uh, much more detailed about what your claims are, who it's against, and why. So there's the notice of claim, just saying, I'm gonna file, I'm gonna file a claim, and that has to be done in Michigan. And then there's a complaint. Now, the complaint, that statute, I don't believe that has run, or, you know, I, I don't think that's an issue, but the notice of claim is something that needs to be filed right away.
Any of your attorneys, are they out of Michigan, or are they out of Pennsylvania? I know some of them are out of Philadelphia, some of them like you are.
We're working with, with lawyers here in Michigan, and our firm is...
Who are they?
We have a firm, it's called the Gugation Firm, and they're, I don't, no. They're actually, the Gugation Firm is in Bloomfield, and then there's Alan Kennedy, who was here a minute ago, and he's in Flint. He just walked out. He just walked out. And, um, there's Kamila. There are two attorneys from Flint that we're working with, and they are right outside. And I'm happy to introduce you to them. Um, and then another firm that's in Bloomfield.
Because a lot of times, uh, what's been going on lately is fly-by-night. Sign up, people have to sign up for different things, and you wanna talk to a attorney or ask them different, I haven't signed them, I'm just saying, uh, call the numbers, or call, and you can't get no contact. So, you know, people are signing, stuff away, you know, the signatures. And when you wanna talk to somebody about something, you know, a lot of them are fly-by-night. I call them fly-by-night, because they in here wanna get people to sign up for different things, and when you wanna talk to somebody, you can't contact anybody.
I understand that, and that's exactly why I said when I said a lawyer, which is make sure you vet, and look up, look up the firms, if, if you're signing up with somebody. Um, when, if you wanna get in contact with me, you will have my number, and you can reach me. And, and that, our lawyers at my firm, you know, we are reachable, that is what we do.
If, uh, decided you, your payment was to be recalled, and it's a discussion for everyone, then what type of consent would the law firm?
Okay, I, I, I heard the first part, but I didn't hear, you asked me what the cost would be?
It's there. And it's, say, it's for the law firm, or you guys, I mean, that, sort of, your percentage?
Right. So we work on a contingent fee basis, I mean, people can pay us on an hourly basis, but clearly that doesn't make sense. Um, we work on a contingent fee basis, and what that means is you don't pay anything at all, unless we recover money for you. We front the costs, and we do the work. Once there is a recovery, either through a settlement, or through a verdict, however it happens, then our fee is thirty percent, is a third, that is our fee. And the costs, um, you know, come off the top. Well, our, and then when I say cost, I wanna be very clear, that's only out-of-pocket costs, not the cost of the lawyers, or a support staff. It's just money that we actually went check for, experts, depositions, things like that. That, but that is not paid until, unless and until you get money. I'm sorry.
The cases that you were speaking of, you got drawn out. I don't know what cases were being drawn out or not, and what the people know to find, is for, is certain claim for your health, certain claim. Is a certain claim for your health, certain claim?
There, no cases have been thrown out so far. You mean here?
I heard you said at the beginning, there was a case for.
No, no, no. No. No, they have not been thrown out, absolutely not. The state has, is trying to get the cases thrown out because they say these notices were not filed. It hasn't happened yet. The courts have not ruled on it yet.
So, how do people know which claim to file for? I mean, you don't know if it's ongoing or not, and maybe your health is at issue. You know, how sort of, how long period of time do you have to wait to find out if your claim is going to be accepted or not?
Okay.
And are you affiliated with Conrath, or do you want to go and be a lawyer?
Yeah. Yeah, I am. In terms of being thrown out, that is a technicality that they're trying to throw cases. Not on the merits, it's not like saying, "These people don't have a claim." This is on a technicality because they didn't file a certain piece of paper. That these cases are not going to get thrown out now. I don't want to, I just, I don't want to sleep you. These cases were not thrown out. The state is trying to get them thrown out. But they're not, they have not been.
How are we to know then?
What?
How are we to know?
Whether they get thrown out or not? Once it's argued in the court, the judge will make a decision and it will be, I mean, it will be public.
Do you think that health issues can, uh, battle, you know? And, you know, if I follow the plan, I might look forward down the street to it. I want to leave here before my claim is even walked forward.
What you're asking about is timing. What's the timeframe? And I'm not going to stand here and tell you that these, your case or any case is going to get resolved tomorrow, next week, next month. Unfortunately, litigation is slow. It's a slow process. It does not happen quickly. Now, the one thing about, this is going to take time. It is going to take time. But there is a lot of political pressure to resolve and help people resolve some of these claims in this community. And I think that may help move things faster than they might otherwise move. But generally, litigation is slow. It takes time.
You're the first person I have heard talk about the trauma that the city of Flint residents have been exposed to. And you're the first person in all of the buzz that has spoke about the trauma that these little boys and girls, we're grown folks, so we can handle some things. But these little boys and girls are in school, can't watch their parents. And what, that is an impact down there, right? And what kind of services? Okay, I'm sorry, let me just, you stop down.
Go ahead.
Okay, you're the first person that spoke about that. And I commend you and thank you that I serve and for being here and recognizing that that is going to be a huge significant issue for little children that just ran by like that little girl right there. They're traumatized, devastated, watching on the news for a basic need that can't be met and for a government that poisons them. What services in the future, because this is going to impact them. Not to talk about the lead, you already know that, it's a lot of time. So, what about the trauma, the services that they're going to need? And even some of the families that are, all of the families, the adults. But the little children are the ones that are going to be the most significantly impacted if immediate intervention doesn't take place. So, and people with health concerns, people are dying in this city. Some people don't have time to wait. And so, I'm sorry, I just, very, very, just, uh, the trauma is a huge trigger for me. No one's talking about it. And you're the first person that's addressed that issue. And it needs to be addressed.
It does, and I would share with you something, and it doesn't, oh, it doesn't happen in every environmental case, but let me share something that I did in, I don't know how many of you remember, Three Mile Island, okay? One of the things that I worked on is develop a protocol, a way of evaluating a community. Not only the individuals and the kids in the community having been impacted with something they couldn't see, they couldn't feel, but they knew could kill them, okay? And that is a traumatic event, not just for the kids. It's for parents also, who are worried about their kids and worried about themselves and worried about the elderly and worried about, it is real. The other thing we did is not, and we argued that it should be compensable. They, you need to have programs to address that, okay?
So, I thought if your firm is going to address with these folks that if they should elect to go with the firm, are you going to support rate that in the services?
As a, yes. Whether the courts here will recognize it, that is going to be a battle, but yes. And not only individually, one of the other things that I've done in other communities is it's not just the individual, the impact on the individual, but also on the community as a whole. Because this community has become stigmatized. And that has an impact on how people feel in their homes, in their lives, in their schools, how they're older from Flint, oh, that's the waters. You know, so it's not just, it's individuals and kids, but it's also asking, what happens to a community? And I actually, actually I have a chapter in a book that has to do with communities that are impacted on in that way. I used another community in Times, this was Times Beach, Missouri involving Dioxin, where the entire community had to be relocated. And these are people who lived, this is in Missouri, who lived together for generations and literally, you know, were uprooted and, you know, the impact of that. So, yeah, to the extent, is this something that, as a lawyer, I'm looking at in terms of addressing? Yes. Is, can I tell you that it's something that will be compensable and recognized by Michigan courts? I can't guarantee that. Because Michigan courts, unfortunately. But will I try to do that? And bring that to the fore? Absolutely. Because I think it's, I think it's critical. I think that is the silent injury, is the trauma.
Well, I know community mental health, as of 2013, started screening individuals for post-traumatic stress disorders. So, it is something that is recognized in the community and the mental health community, so.
Well, my, I didn't use the term, but what I did, my whole area of practice as a psychologist, which again was many years ago, was in the area of post-traumatic stress, related specifically to chemical disasters. I mean, that's what I did.
Yes, I would like to ask you a question about that. Post-traumatic stress, I'm sure every last one of us may not do that. Shouldn't that be incorporated into the filing also?
It would.
Oh, it will?
You mean, as a, yes, whether, will it be? Yes. Will the courts recognize it? I don't know. I think there are also, you know, one of the things that you can do, whether the courts recognize it as a damage that is compensable is one thing. But asking for relief would just create programs that address or provide a kind of treatment or just support services for people experiencing it. That is something we can do.
Free of charge?
It should.
Right.
No question, it should. Right, so, to answer your question, would I build that into a complaint? Yes, I would, absolutely.
I want to know, how can we go about, I feel like, it's not that I'm trying to cut and run. I'm raising my two grandchildren. Three years old, my six-year-old grandson has, is autistic. Now, it's not that I want to cut and run. I think I should be offering some type of relocation. I don't want to be here anymore. I'm the sole supporter of my family. I have to protect my family. And no one ever says anything about, you know, offering us relocation. Those who want to stay fine. But I think we should give, be given more opportunities here. You know, because I don't, I don't want to be here anymore. I just don't.
Do you own the home?
Yes.
Have you, have you tried to sell it?
Yes, I can't. It's worth zero.
That...
I put a lot of work into it too.
So, that is a damage. Now, relocation is another issue, but, but the fact that we can't sell the home, that somebody who, even if they wanted to buy your home, couldn't get a mortgage to pay for because the bank wouldn't give it to them because of the contamination.
And I've even told my...
So, that is a damage and that is compensable. So, that is something that in a lawsuit is a compensable damage. You could get money for and then, you know, make the change in your life that makes sense for you.
I've even called my banking, you know, honest up, up front, I said, "Now, I'm trying not to walk away from this. Is there any kind of help you can give me so I can walk away? Because at this point now, I'm willing to walk away from it. It's just that important to me for my little children."
I understand. And what did they say?
Well, they put me on a lot of different lines, you know, hold and some triage thing and then all of a sudden, connect was broken. Oh, we're going out. Connect was broken and I couldn't get back into to all these people, you know? Because, you know, who wouldn't wear them for years to live out here? And, you know, it's a scary thing, but the fact that we have a lot of people coming in here telling us all this, the newer, we don't know who to trust.
I understand.
You know, it's just overwhelming. It look like we are alone. I feel alone. I do. I feel alone and very confused. And I'm not the tightest word, you know?
It is, but it is a very confusing, I don't think that's you. I think it's very confusing and you're getting a lot of different information and not a lot of clear information. And I think one of the biggest issues is the fact that it's not remedying. I mean, it still exists, even though they say that now the flood levels are less. The fact is that the infrastructure, the pipes are still there.
Well, that's what means the building is still, I trust it right now.
Well, I think that's one of the things that happens is that people lose a sense of trust and a belief that the government, the regulatory agencies that are there to protect them, don't. It's a betrayal. I mean, one of the, it's a betrayal, it feels like betrayal.
Are or will be many lawsuits filed by different attorneys and that? Can you talk a little bit about consolidation, how that?
I'm sorry, the what?
There are or will be many lawsuits filed.
Right.
By different attorneys and firms. Can you talk a little bit about consolidation? All the lawsuits are consolidated, what then happens or who's our attorney and...
I mean, what happens?
If all the lawsuits are consolidated?
Well, what hap, I mean, there are lawsuits currently filed in federal court, in Court of Claims, and I think in state court. So, they're filed in three different courts. Depending on who's, because some people file just against the state, some people file NADA, there's company of environmental, company land. So, there's, there are lawsuits are filed in three different courts. Will there be some consolidation? I think ultimately there will be some consolidation of the lawsuits, but not that they won't. The cases, most, there's class actions and then there's individual cases that have been filed. There will be, let me answer that differently. I don't think that cases will be consolidated. What might happen is that the work done on them might be. So, in other words, if I represent, you know, five thousand, the five thousand people that I represent, or whatever it is, I still represent those people. But for example, I'm going to want to take the depositions of some of the people in the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, okay? So are the other lawyers. That will be consolidated. The discovery, the information that we're going to be looking for in order to prove up your claims if we're representing you, that's going to be, wanting to be done by all the lawyers that are representing people. That will be consolidated, not the cases themselves.
Are you filing in the state of Michigan or are you filing in all three courts? Are you filing in all three courts? Are you filing against the state of Michigan, Ohio, or are you filing, how are you filing?
We have not made a final decision, but we are like, we're probably going to file in federal court, which is also here in Michigan. But federal court and in the Court of Claims, which is the court that you file cases against the state. So, we will file one of them.
So, give her about a little work around the question, sorry. Estimate-wise, we're talking, she's talking time. We all talk time today. Two years, three years, five years, ten years? This, this is... I would put it at five.
I wish I could answer that.
Let me say something, because she's a little reluctant to ask me, but I'm going to say something from a legal standpoint. I filed the case when I was in the Michigan Department of Corrections and I won a case in the Westwood District. There's not one attorney in the city of Flint that ever won a case in the Westwood District. And I won this case by myself when I was in the Michigan Department of Corrections. I won six figures and they sent me home five months later. Every lawyer I tried to contact told me I didn't have a case, they wished me good luck. So, I went to the law library and I studied and I fought against two state attorney generals. And I fought against two wardens, four officers, and one case manager. I fought against all of them. And so, let me tell you the time span. It took me three years, normally three years in Flint, but in Michigan, I said, in Michigan. In the federal court, it normally takes, well, it don't, it takes normally three years, but don't make that absolute. Just look at the three years. And if it go past three years, then it go past it. But it normally at the minimum takes at least three years. Because you got to do discovery, you got to do deposition. Deposition is taking an oath, I mean, taking a statement under oath. You got a lot of other things they got to do before they even get to the trial. But you got to survive certain hurdles, which is called summary disposition. I mean, you have to prove a genuine issue material fact, you know what I mean?
You are right.
Okay, all right. You got to prove a genuine issue material fact. Some people claim to, no, I'm not a lawyer. I'm going to law school, I got one class attribute too that I'm going to call it. Um, I know a lot of silver though. Um, so, I know she's been talking because she's an attorney. So, some things she has to keep herself from saying, you know, but I've been saying it because I've been through it. So, normally it takes about three years, you know? They got to do a lot of stuff, but if you survive summary disposition, that's the hardest hurdle. That's a genuine issue material fact. Let me give you an example of what they mean by that. If you and I get in a hurry, yet tomorrow I got a big deep scratch on. A genuine issue, all I got to prove is that you and I really have a confrontation. Now, even though I survived summary disposition, which is a genuine issue material fact, even though I survived that, the court is not saying that you're guilty or that you're wrong. They just saying that it's a genuine issue that can be put in front of a trial. But normally when it gets to that way and it's simple, they never want to go to trial, they settle. Because it costs so much money and they just say, "Well, look, if the court has allowed them to survive summary disposition, more than likely they're going to really win the case." So, they're going to come and settle. Am I right? Am I making some sense?
You are definitely making sense.
Okay, I'm going to let her take over.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say one. Okay, and we got, and we got to conclude because we got two more presentations. So, we do have to conclude in a minute, but go ahead.
No, I was going to say...
She want to ask a question. Just ask two more questions.
Okay.
Two more questions. Because we're past seven o'clock, unfortunately. But I would love for her to speak all day, but we are on time, Miss Frank, unfortunately.
I'm sitting at a situation. Each day, each day with this egregious situation. We're getting sicker. We don't know when we're going to leave this earth because of this problem. I went to bed one day, woke up, I couldn't walk. I have no life-threatening disease. If you go to Congress and you say you didn't know about this problem in Flint and you lie, is that, you're committing perjury? If you gradually kill the people in this city, slowly kill them with lead, the children, the senior citizens, isn't that a criminal act if you know about it?
Let me try to, let me stand here. Do I think that what was done is criminal and not under the criminal law, the highest level of practice, criminal law? That said, do I think what was done was criminal? I do.
If you lie to Congress?
But I'm not a criminal lawyer. Do I think that, yeah, I mean, look, I don't know how the, I don't know if, who, I'm, I don't know who you're talking about. It's not, you know, who you're talking about, it's who you're talking about.
I'm talking about Herr Schneidler.
Right. But I don't think he said he didn't know. Maybe he said.
Get up, Herr Schneidler.
He said he didn't.
He didn't, he said he didn't know.
So, so, hey, please, everyone give her a round of applause. She came all the way. She gave an excellent presentation. I know she made a wealth of knowledge, because I seen people pulling out their pens and notebooks and I said, "That's great." When I see that, I know that there's some good information being disclosed. Thank you very much. So now I have a EPA guy that wanna come up and also want these guys to come up as well. Can you please come? We're gonna do this. Okay, thank you, thank you. And so I got an EPA guy here and I have a crew here that brought this filtration system. This filtration system, they brought it to my house and they did a test in my house. I put warm water, because only warm water can really be tested to see if there's contaminants in the water. So I put warm water in this and they wanna, they wanna show you this, give a demonstration. This is really excellent. And then after he did the demonstration, he said, "Give me a cup and I'll drink." And he drunk. He drunk the water and I said, "Give me a cup." And I drunk, because if I want to show this to people, I wanna drink it to them. And so I drunk it and it tastes better than bottled water. Well, you make your decision, but I do want you to see this.
No, 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 no. Yeah, he come in after. Well, thank you for coming to our, our segment of this night of information and we really appreciate the council inviting us. You've done so much for this, for this community. We're Water Row and we're here to show you a, a solution that can be taken, taken right away. This is, this is a, an interim solution that can happen very, very quickly. That's what, that's what we're here for. Water Row has teamed with Water is Life and Flint HGO for this life-saving technology for people of Flint. We researched the Flint's water crisis, we're horrified by the extent of the water, water contamination here. And also the, the less than ideal interim solution to bottled water. I, I think everybody in Flint is very tired of bottled water right about now. In March of this year, we came to Flint and we interviewed the people that you saw in the video. And one of the things they told us was they very much appreciated the donations for the bottled water, but also that it was very inconvenient. So we're, we're here with the, with the Water Row, we're gonna test it, we're gonna have you come up and taste it yourself and see what you think. Um, the other, the other part of it is that we hear that the donations are kind of slowing down their bottled water. We were at a residential facility downtown today and the manager there said, "It's been three weeks between their deliveries of water." So this is a solution that will, will have water on your, your countertop perpetually as long as you happen to have the machine. Flint HGO is working on a deployment through schools, churches, and civic organizations. We demonstrated at Water Row, the people of Flint, and there was a big film's up about the, the tasteful water and the, a Flint's water lab has the perfect purity of the water. They're currently gonna work with local partner organizations to raise funds to purchase Water Row at wholesale cost and provide it to the people of Flint. And we're also providing celebrity endorsements for this project. Now, here's some details about the, about the Water Row system. The parent company of Water Row is the largest supplier of goods to the Home Depot and Costco. Water Row engineers have invested three years to develop the, the Water Row Reverse Osmosis Water Purifier. The finished product has exceeded all expectations of high-tech design and performance. We have incorporated a digital total dissolved solids meter, so you can see the real-time purity of the water. Throughout, through the patent, technology helps maximize the output, introducing, producing one lead in five minutes, we have cut the waste of water, reduce it to 20%. Typically, these reverse osmosis systems reduce three and a half times the water wasted to what they actually purify, so that results in much lower water levels. And so people ask, "What is reverse osmosis?" And the simple answer is, a more technical answer will come from the guy who really knows what reverse osmosis is, but basically it's, it's purifying, drinking water by coarsing, untreated, water molecules to semi-permeable membranes or filters. And the membranes block the contaminants and the impurities, so remove, leave you with the purest drinking water. And it also has the carbon filter, there's four filters in, in this water purifier. And the carbon filter actually adds flame to the, to the water. So Water Row's unique recycling system contains the four filters, designed filter, and refilter every drop of water as you pour into the machine. It reduces ninety-nine point nine 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 nine, I think six nines to the right of the decimal point, of all impurities, so that's, you can't get too much purity of that. I think that's about as pure as you're gonna get full, full water. Uh, and Water Row does not require any installation, it's, it sits on your kitchen countertop. All you gotta do is plug it in, it's just like using a drip coffee machine. Uh, so we receive many requests for Water Row from people of Flint and other concerned, uh, people from all over the world, actually. And so for the first phase of this project, we are seeking companies and organizations and grants to fund purchase of five thousand units of the Water Row. Uh, the wholesale cost is $250. These units will be distributed to the areas of Flint that are hit hardest and to the people who are most in need of these, of this purified water that you don't have to open a bottle to get to. So we're gonna do a demonstration now. Ken from Water is Life is gonna take over and show us how it is. Come on, take a drink.
I just want to say thank you guys for coming out today. We, we do have a cool system here to show you and I'll.
You gotta see this.
There we go.
I told them, "Gotta see this."
You gotta see this in action. What, one of the things that has impressed me, being here with the good people of Flint, has been the stories and the, the passion that I've heard people share their stories with, with us about. We've had the chance to sit in many family homes and be in with some of the senior adults, some of those that are most impacted by this water crisis, because they're not able to haul water up the stairs. They're not able to put, you know, water in their wheelchair. I see some of you in with crutches and with, with canes here tonight. It's impossible for you to carry water up and down to into your home, even though it is inconvenient. This is, this is a system that provides ultra-purified water through a reverse osmosis process. The, there's nothing like it on the market today. It is a high-tech device as well. It syncs up with your smartphone, you'll be able to turn it off, you'll be able to see water levels and their quality, and it's a really cool deal. There's two different TDS meters, now TDS stands for total dissolved solids, and what that shows you is, is the source water is at 237 hearts per million. Typically, tap water is supposed to be at 50 or less for it to be pumped, okay? And so then you see the output level is at point zero five, so it's, it's at five TDS for, for an individual, okay? You left me hanging. Simple load, it's got a.
Yeah, I just need to bring the water.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
So.
Okay. Gotcha. So he's got, got water in, in here. One of the things that you can do with this is you can also select the amount of water that you want dispensed, create clean drinking water on the main. So the water that is inside the tank originally is at 237 hearts per million. You're gonna see the number change, because what it's doing is it's taking the dirty water that it, or the impurities out of the water and dumping it back into the reservoir there.
This is all water from the toilet.
Water from the toilet, all right.
No, no, no.
Saying this episode, right.
I just said, nothing you know about drinking water.
One of the things that, that is amazing to me is something so small, so, so compact. Our goal is to raise the funds, put these in five thousand homes in Flint, Michigan. You can help us out.
For free.
For free. Um, we want, we need you to, to sign up.
We ain't talking about selling that.
Yeah, we're not selling it to you, we're giving it to you. Um, we need to see one of these on everybody's household, especially those that are at most risk. We have children, we have senior adults, we have people that are in wheelchairs that desperately need a solution. You're taking back the control of your own water by being able to do this. You're not having to depend on somebody coming with a truck, somebody showing up to give a freebie out. You are taking control of your own situation.
Can you show them the four filters behind there where they can see?
Yeah, absolutely. If you look at the, this mod, we opened it up on the back here, four different filters that go through. These filters are, the RO filter will last for 12 months. The machine is a smart machine, it's gonna tell you when those filters are running out of their lifespan, and so it'll show up on the screen here and show you exactly where that filter is in its lifespan. Dicky, you wanna say anything else? This is the inventor?
Yeah, I'm the CEO and the founder of the Water Row and welcome, because I fly plane two weeks ago and I found that my goal here is really in the, that's, they need someone to help them, so we want you to start this campaign to let the nationwide people know. You have some questions?
Yes, how much is the filter?
Yeah, the filter, for now, filter is $60 per set, and that's, that's like seven filters. The usage is 2,000 liters for that set of filter. So basically, a family of five can use that for one, around one year. So like, yeah.
One year, and this it will cost you?
$60.
Sixty, thank you.
For all four?
Yeah.
Yeah, for all four of the filters, yeah. One of the questions too is about the RO filter, it's designed by GE and all of the filters are made here in the USA.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, all the filter system is made in USA and we are not selling the cheap products either. And of course, we send it free for you guys and we just want you guys to sign it and let the whole society know these things and the other people like, other charities, right, social associations will donate a bunch for you.
So that's like having a faucet in your house?
Right, it's, it's having a water treatment system in your house that will provide ultra-purified water for you. Bon appetit. That toilet water doesn't taste too bad.
No.
Don't taste at all, never, you bet.
Hey, I think, can we give them a round of applause? Because they're gonna work on bringing five thousand for free. They ain't talking about selling anything now, and that ain't what we talking about. Ain't nobody selling nothing, nothing, nothing today. Okay, uh, let me get the EPA guy. Thank you very much, thank you. You guys is wonderful. Man, you did a good job doing this. Thank you very much.
We're beside our fat.
Well, well, come talk to them, right out here. Yeah, anyway. This is the EPA guy, I guess he's gonna give you some information, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you councilman. My name is Lou Pia, I'm the deputy chief of staff for the EPA, live in Washington DC, from Michigan, so I've been back here for the last couple of months trying to talk to as many folks as possible about, obviously, this water issue. And so you all have one of our fact sheets, I think that was passed out, and really I just wanna emphasize some of the information that's on there, it's really important to make sure that we're, we're staying safe. Filtered water is essential, you've got to have filters and you cannot drink from the tap. Obviously, I'm, I'm just learning about this system here, the council was right there about it. You know, I, I can't comment on different types of filter systems, but you have to have one, it needs to be NSF certified. Uh, but what's also, this is important, is you have to maintain the filter and so you gotta change it out every 30 days, because dang wear down, just like anything else goes. Uh, the last thing I really wanna point out is that we are having an open house and you all have these lives, but in the open house this Saturday, this Saturday, April 16th, down at the University of Michigan in Flint, this is the Mott University Center. This will be a one-stop shop to be able to get a lot of your questions answered. I'm not a technical person, you know, I'm not here trying to get some feedback from you all, your concerns, take it back to the agency and see if we can put it to work. But this will be a, a great opportunity to talk to doctors, public health officials, ask your questions, be directed to appropriate resources. So I encourage you all, if you have questions or concerns, to come on Saturday. If you can't come, pass your flag on to somebody else who can come, because, you know, there's so much, there's so many different elements to this crisis, there's so many different ways that we can all be affected. So I hope to see you all on Saturday, I'll be there. I'll also be out here as well once this, once this finishes out, I know the time is short. And so if you have questions, if there's a way that I can be a resource, come catch me after this session and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we give them a round of applause? I got one more guy outside, he's from California. This guy called me every day, because he claims that he has some pill that brings heavy metal out of your, I mean, out of your body, out of your body. So I just wanna call him on.
Mr. Davis, this morning, essentially why didn't we hear? This gentleman, why didn't you follow your, I was calling you PX.
Louder, please, I can't hear you.
Most of you have the brochure and some flyers, some testimonials from the doctor who did the heavy metal test on cancer patients who have had very excessive toxic heavy metals and how it worked as a day in our product. This product has been created for Chernobyl, this is originally, initially, and it was tested on radiation, then it was tested on oncological patients who were going through chemotherapy and radiotherapy. So it kept, glucose was in the level at all times, and these are the white sensors responsible for immune system. When they drop, the procedure must be stopped, otherwise person might die, every day. So this product supports immune system scientifically and clinically proven and documented. I can't search anymore. Then we tested here for cancer patients who have excessive heavy metals, every type, and also who have a deficiency of essential heavy metals, such as magnesium, even diodes. It removed every single excessive heavy metal, small percentage within the range of forty to 100%, and those levels that are essentials, it brought them up to the level. And it's all documented. We have many documentation, in fact, all this is all documents to support our claims. It removes toxic heavy metals, period. And what happens then is, what I, what I wanna ask you all, you need, you all know, or some of you have taken tests for lead or toxic heavy metals with this water crisis. And by the way, this heavy metal problem is not new, it has been organized, but not only now, it's, it only has proven that I'm shown how to detect them, how to measure them, and how to identify them, and how to remove them. That's all we have. Okay, so anybody that you know or yourself who have taken tests for, for lead, that's the big problem in Flint, Michigan, what you will, what you will do is you will send, even to Mr. Davis, your consent is okay to send it to us, your name and address, and press on the results what you had, we will send you a free product for one month supply to try. You try it and after, after you try it, you will share with us with your results. It's that simple. That way we will be able to help others, knowing that it works. Do you understand that? Any questions?
Phone number, please?
Okay, our phone number is 1-866, it's our number. Same thing is with 818, 996, 4325.
One more time, a little slower.
One more time, said, 818-996-4325.
You gotta dig that? Hold, hold on a second. They're, they're working with your accent, you gotta do it one more time for them, real slow.
Our website is foliumpx, F-O-L-I-U-M-P-X.
I have it on my phone. I have, I've just told, I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, I'll give it to you now, you got two hands, face, right?
Stand by.
Any questions?
Force on the handout, okay, place on the handout.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yeah, that's it. They got your number.
Okay.
They got your number.
Thank you for your, um, it's late, it's, it's, it's.